Good morning, everybody. It's 7:30. Welcome to the Mesa City Council Study Session for May 12, 2022. As you can see, the mayor is unable to attend today, and he's excused. All the other members of our council are present. First on our agenda is to review Monday's agenda for our council meeting. So if we want to look through that, and council bring up anything that you would like to review. I know item 5P, which is the purchase of a property on Main Street, I think we're going to review this morning.
We are ready, yes.
If you'd like. Jeff, will you come forward?
Is that okay? We proceed with that, unless there's another question?
Jeff McVey, Manager Downtown Transformation. On your agenda for Monday is a resolution authorizing the purchase of 111 West Main Street for the use of a restaurant incubator. Now, to give you, the council, a little bit of a refresher from when we first presented this idea a few months ago. Restaurant incubator, the idea of the restaurant incubator is to create an environment in which we can provide business development support services, classes, shared kitchens, and also in this case, a unique inclusion is a retail component that would allow five to seven new restaurants to be able to practice and get up to speed in a low-risk and lower-cost environment. We are using ARPA funding for this, and with that, our objectives are to address the impacts of COVID that restaurateurs and food businesses have experienced through the years. Now, those are some that are restaurants that had to close up shop or to reduce the scale of their services, go back to catering, or things along that line. But we're also experiencing, with the ongoing supply chain issues, labor market issues, we're continuing to experience the impacts of COVID, especially in the restaurant and food business industry. 111 West Main Street, the last use that I can remember being in this building and that probably the group can remember being in this building is the Catholic bookstore. Since then, I don't believe there's been a use in there. It went into foreclosure for a while. The current owner bought it with the intention of using it for a hair salon. So you'll see on this interior shot that he had done some light tenant improvements on the inside, so there is some improvement to the building. Giving you a little detail about it, it's about a 6,400 square foot on the first floor. It's almost a 6,000-square-foot full basement. There is a small mezzanine above the first floor as well. The purchase price is $1.6 million. That is based off an appraised value. According to our federal guidelines for acquisition of property, we are required to pay the purchase price, or I'm sorry, the appraised value to the property owner. We did enter a contract with him last week, so we opened escrow just at the end of last week. We're about one week into our 60-day feasibility period. Once that we have cleared the feasibility period, we need to get some inspectors in there. Well, first of all, we need council approval. We need to get some inspectors in there and make sure that everything looks good. We would then go to our close, which is about 45 days. Following council direction on the purchase of the building, we would then finalize our lease agreement with Local First Arizona. That is drafted. We're going to actually be meeting with them next week to go over some of the details. We are going to then hire a designer off of our on-call list so that we can do some conceptual designs on the building. We need those conceptual designs to be able to do the initial building program and scope of work that we would then use to select a design build contractor. Design build contractor, delivery method is going to be new to our city, so we are currently building the contract language and figuring out how that's going to work. But we need to have a design, because if we don't have a design, the design build contractor just gets a pool of money and can do whatever they want, as long as it meets our overall end goal. So the more detail that we have in our RFQ and RFP to our design build contractor, the more we are going to be in control of what happens at the site. Overall, we're looking at up to two years before we could be in the building and operating with Local First. And we continue to have, as with all of our projects, we are continuing to have, looking at the supply chain and labor markets and what that might have an impact as we go down through design and construction. So that's my really quick overview. Happy to answer any questions.
Vice Mayor Lina.
Jeff, maybe you should talk about how we're going to pay for this building.
Oh, yes. Vice Mayor, Councilmember Luna, this is ARPA. We're going to use ARPA funds. We currently have, I think, a total of three or three and a half million dollars budgeted for this project.
And this is really going to be a business incubator, if you will, starting, training people how to start their own restaurants, where the goal is that they will go then somewhere else and either lease or purchase a building and start restaurants within the downtown area or throughout the city of Mesa.
Right. We are very proud of the local business community that we have in downtown, and this is one way that we can help try and continue to build our own so that we aren't having to go and ask for the chain that's in Gilbert to come to Mesa. We'd rather be able to create our own chain that's going to go to Gilbert down the road. Now, personally, I hope that every one of them, we can find space in downtown, but if they go into the rest of the city, I think I will consider that a victory as well.
Thanks, Jeff. It doesn't have a facade, does it?
You know, it's that, I can go back to it.
No, it appears that it doesn't.
It's that interesting copper. It's definitely patinaed. I would imagine our build-out would include some level of facade improvement. It doesn't provide any shade over the sidewalk, so I think there's some level of facade improvement we would want to include.
Or at least shade coming out, yeah.
So during the construction of it, are you using ARPA fence for that as well?
Correct.
For the remodel, as well as the purchase price?
For the purchase, the design, and the construction.
Okay, thanks.
Remind me how this is being run? Local First Arizona with City of Mesa staff, or just Local First Arizona?
City of Mesa, as soon as we are done constructing that building, we're going to hand those keys over with the lease to Local First Arizona, and we're going to let them do what they do best, and we're going to become landlords, and we'll do what we do better. We have set the lease up in a way that Local First will be paying us rent sufficient enough that we can create a building maintenance fund, but also that they are going to be generating enough revenues that they will be able to cover all of their costs. The city will, after we hand over the keys, the only cost that we should have are those of a typical landlord-tenant relationship. So if the building systems are a problem, then as landlord, we would need to take care of it. But our intent is to take those lease payments that we received of them, put them into a fund that is meant to be reserve and replacement of facilities if need be.
Okay, thank you.
So Jeff, it looks like we have about 6,000 square feet on the first floor, about 6,000 feet on the basement with the mezzanine. So how is that going to lay out? How is that going to be used? Of course, we know the first floor will be the food vendors, right? Are we also going to expand into the basement? And that's yet to be seen, or what is the initial design build on the entire space or just part of it?
Vice Mayor, it will be the entire space. It's hard to see in this picture. This is a picture of the basement right now. The basement is actually divided up in a way that has several large rooms, almost conference room size. So really, the idea is that the shared kitchen, the food hall will be on the first floor. The basement is going to be an excellent opportunity for instruction space, as well as when we're talking about, this is a restaurant and food business incubator, so some of the people that we're going to be helping to incubate aren't necessarily going to be restaurants. They could be caterers, or at one point, we had a potato chip in the floors of kitchen, they had a potato chip manufacturer. So these could also be spaces for those that are value-add businesses versus those that need a restaurant space. Could also be demonstration space, so if we're trying to create a catering business, maybe they need a spot where they can have people come and sample their foods. So that has a lot of opportunity to use the basement. I think Local First was very excited when they got to see the basement and what the possibilities are for them as well.
Wonderful. I think it's a great idea, especially, you know, the success of our downtown is certainly attributed to many of our local businesses and the community that they've created in attracting other local businesses. But we know with our success of ASU and some other businesses and more residences, that it's not going to be the cheapest game in town to get space in downtown Mesa. It's going to be more difficult. And that's where I think a lot of downtowns in their, early on, have a lot of local businesses, but as rents go up and it becomes more expensive, that's difficult to hang on to. So we're giving that opportunity to keep that ecosystem, a local business which we deeply value and gives us character and are historic downtown. And I think, of course, I would like it done tomorrow, but two years is certainly be needed as we expect to see less and less space available, and the space will be more expensive and it'll be more difficult. Of course, supporting entrepreneurship is what we're all about and what we want to accomplish in downtown, so that fulfills that workforce development piece. So thank you for all your work on that. I know a lot has gone into that, and, oh, and Councilmember Horede has a question.
I know we talked in, when this was discussed, but prioritizing Mesa-based residents or Mesa-based restaurants, is that still part of the plan here?
Councilmember Horede, definitely. We want to focus on Mesa businesses. In talking with Local First Arizona, with their floors of kitchens they have now, they have a waiting list, long enough, deep enough, that we'll be able to maintain Mesa businesses in here for probably quite a while.
Okay, perfect.
Thank you very much, Jeff. I appreciate all the work that's gone into this and the presentation this morning.
Okay.
So other items on the agenda for Monday?
I do. I had a question on 4H, the Off the Streets Emergency Housing. Just asked if we could get an update on that, spending the additional $400,000.
So is there a question? What's the?
Just an update on it and how the program's working.
Oh, okay, sure. Go ahead, Aaron.
Good morning. My name is Erin Romain. I'm an Executive Management Assistant. Good morning, Vice Mayor and Council. And so, an update on the Off the Streets program. It's been in operation since May of 2020, and it has shown a very high success rate of approximately 80% positive exits from the program. What that means is as the homeless individuals are entering the Off the Streets program, they are going through a very specific housing plan with our partners, Community Bridges, and as they go through that housing plan, they are exiting into transitional housing or a permanent housing successfully.
So my question was, the program's working efficiently then?
It is. It's working very efficiently.
And then we're adding, it looks like we're adding some additional hotel rooms?
Yes, we are. What we are finding, Councilmember Freeman, is that it is so successful, although there is always a need for more additional space. So what we are requesting here is additional budget through ARPA funds to add more rooms at the hotel space and a new innovative space called Dust to Dawn, which is actually a congregate space. So instead of individual room space, it would be a congregate space where multiple people are in a room at a time using cots, and it'll be open 24/7. So as our police, fire, or park rangers do come in contact with homeless individuals, no matter what time of day or night it is, they can immediately make contact with them and get them into the Off the Streets emergency shelter and directly into that congregate space, even if a room is not available in the hotel at that very moment, and get them into that safe, sheltered environment.
Good. That's what triggered my question, was the Dust to Dawn program?
Yes.
Because that's a new program.
It is. It's a new component to the Off the Streets shelter that we would like to try out and see if we can get more individuals served in a rapid amount of time.
Good, good. And it helps to leave our public safety personnel, as well as our park rangers, allow them to facilitate homeless or an individual into that congregate housing.
Absolutely. The solution is based on feedback from our public safety personnel, and that's why we want to implement that.
Good, thank you.
Let me just remind the council, we have to have these rooms. If we don't have these rooms, we cannot enforce trespassing. And while this is, we're using the ARPA funds for this period of time, we're also out looking for a permanent solution for we can acquire a hotel or something like that. So it's obviously, it has leasing with ARPA dollars, at some point, that expires. And so we are looking for properties that, if we can acquire and then have for the long term to provide the same service, we're also out having that, looking for those also.
We have quite a few questions, Councilmember Luna, and then Councilmember Spilsbury.
Thank you for doing that. In fact, just last evening, I had a community meeting at the Red Mountain facility, and Tim Walker presented on homelessness in and around northeast Mesa. And he spoke precisely about this program and how helpful it is, because it's a real challenge for our public safety personnel. When they meet homeless individuals, there is a need to take them somewhere, and working with the city and our partner agencies facilitates that process. So thank you for doing this. I think this is a great program. You know, it's badly needed, and we need to continue doing what we can to support our community, so thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Luna. I'm very happy to hear that feedback.
I was just curious, where is this Dust to Dawn program? Is it at the hotel, this classroom space, or is it a different location?
Councilmember Spilsbury, the Dust to Dawn is located on the property of the hotel. The hotel does call it a classroom. It is a building that is on the property that was used for classroom space and was leased out for things like driver's education classroom, so that's why they call it a classroom, but we are going to be using it for the congregate quarters, yes.
How many rooms are at this hotel? Do we have an opportunity to expand? I know there's a lot of need, or we don't want to go there?
They still have to operate, so we don't take, we haven't taken all of them. I forget, how was the total? It's like 100 and...
175.
No, that's how many we're doing. There's more than that. I don't know. Are we taking about?
We do take about half of the rooms. The other half of the rooms, Vice Mayor Duff, are being utilized by regular paying customers at the going rate. So we currently have 75 rooms under lease, and we are expanding up to 85 as needed.
This hotel's kind of, it's not like they're all together. It's kind of like pods of, I don't know if that's the right word, buildings of rooms. So it allows us to, not isolate, but we can contain our area, have our wraparound services and our police security for just one area, and allow them to continue to have their operations separately.
Makes sense.
We've had conversations about acquiring the property, but at this point, they're not interested in selling, so.
Yeah, okay. Unless there's other questions?
I just wanted to point out, 7A is being continued to June 20th.
Yes.
Correct?
Correct.
Okay, so we're letting the neighborhood know that.
Thank you. Thank you. Councilmember Horede.
I have a question on 4B, on the wireless access points. There's an expansion of additional nine square miles. Is that, is that an expansion to what we've talked about before? Maybe? And then what's the rollout? This is the same program that we're working with, School District, correct? Just an update on that.
Good morning, Vice Mayor, Council. This particular item is the expansion of our At Mesa.
Oh, At Mesa, okay.
For nine additional square miles. Originally, we were going to just update the At Mesa in the one-square-mile in downtown, and then we decided to expand that program to work in conjunction with the private cellular, which you're referring to, that we are partnering with Mesa Public Schools on. And so that's what this is.
So Travis, this essentially, today, if you're walking around downtown...
Right.
You can connect At Mesa, you have Wi-Fi connection if you're just walking through downtown. So this is just, your update, I think we were updating that.
We're updating and expanding.
And expanding that coverage with the At Mesa, so that's open to anybody.
Sure.
Especially, and we focused in downtown because of the businesses, our own facilities, it helps the guest or whatever coming into downtown Mesa can still have Wi-Fi connection.
So how does that work with the program that we have on the private cellular piece? Is that being coordinated to enhance that type of programming? Because I'm assuming there's some overlap here as far as coverage.
Yeah, it's a great question, Councilmember Horede. So what the plan is, the routers that are being procured by Mesa Public Schools will attach to either At Mesa or the private cellular. And so what it does, it's got intelligence built into it, and whichever connection is the best and fastest connection, it'll connect to that. And so it does work hand-in-hand with the private cellular program as well. But the private cellular will deploy faster than the At Mesa will, and so there'll still be connectivity. It's just once we get the At Mesa expanded, the speeds could be greater depending on, you know, the penetration.
Okay.
Anything else for the agenda for Monday? If not, we'll move on to item 2A, which is a presentation to provide direction on the continuation of the alternative expenditure limitation, the home rule option. Good morning, Brian.
Good morning, Vice Mayor and Council. My name is Brian Richel. I am the Assistant Director for the Office of Management and Budget. And this morning, I'm going to go over a brief but important presentation over the city's home rule, or what is called the local control of municipal budgeting. So the Arizona Constitution requires that municipalities adopt a balanced budget, which means estimated revenues and resources equal appropriated expenditures. But with that, the state in 1979 and '80 imposed an expenditure limitation for all cities and towns, which means they can only spend up to a certain amount. And that is adjusted, that amount is adjusted for each municipality by their population growth and inflation from 1970 slash '80. So what they do allow, though, is the local election, for a local election, approval of an expenditure limitation alternative, which is a home rule. One of them is home rule. What that does is, so the last time the city did home rule, the home rule was an alternative approved in voters by March of 2000. So way back in 2000, the city first started that. It was renewed in 2004, 2008, 2010, '14, and also '18. So for the past about 20 years, it has been approved by the voters. The current authorization that we are in, that was approved in November of '18, expires June 30 of '23. Therefore, the renewal of, if council approves to put this question on the ballot for November of '22, a renewal of that would go through June 30 of 2027. So why the expenditure limitation formula does not work for the city of Mesa? What happens is, it takes that population and inflation growth over the last 20 years, since '79 and '80, but what it does not include, does not take into consideration, is any new voter-approved revenue streams. For instance, the public safety sales tax of $35 million that we're estimated to bring in for '21, '22, quality of life, the local street sales tax, and also any increases in the general fund sales tax, which we've had in the past, also in the past. What also does not take into consideration is any new revenue streams or any changes to account structure. For instance, environmental compliance fee, but also employee contributions to medical. So what that means is that even though we receive those revenues, the expenditure limitation does not take that into consideration. So even though we receive them, that doesn't mean we're able to spend them if we follow that expenditure limitation calculation from the state. So what would happen for the impact if home rule is not continued, the voters do not approve it in November? The '23, '24 budget would need to be reduced by $810 million from the expenditures that are subject to the limitation. Expenses not subject to the limitation, for example, are bond proceeds, voter-approved bond proceeds, debt service, the HERF, or Highway User Revenue Funds, and then also community facility districts and some of the trust funds. A bulk of the expenditures that are subject to the limitation is the general governmental funds, so basically the general fund, quality of life, public safety sales tax, local street sales tax, and the utility fund. So the next actions for home rule, public notification for the public hearings were published in the newspaper. On Monday, May 16, during the regular council meeting, will be the first public hearing. On June 6, a special council meeting will be for the second public hearing, but also the consideration for the resolution. So with that, that is, take any questions for home rule, but as I mentioned, it is, what home rule does, it gives the council local control over the expenditure limitation for the city of Mesa when they adopt the budget.
So Brian, has this ever not been approved by our voters?
From my understanding, it has, it always has been approved since the year 2000, when the city first implemented home rule.
Yeah. I mean, this is critical for the operation of our city. I mean, really, it's a no-brainer. So hopefully, our voters know that and trust us on the financial obligations we have. And we'll, I mean, I'm full supportive of saying this to the voters. I mean, we do this, what, every four years?
Yes, correct. So every four years.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Luna.
So Brian, this is state statute, right, that we, that voters have to approve the extension of our budget?
Yes, Vice Mayor, Councilmember Luna, this is per state statute, that if we do the home rule or the alternative expenditure, that it is approved every four years.
So we would have to go to this, our legislature to change it, so that we wouldn't have to do this every four years?
That is correct.
Yeah. That would be nice if we could do that, because we know we need the funds to continue our city operation.
Yes.
And if there's a way we could change that, that would be ideal, just like my colleague here on the right side. We need, we need the funds to continue to support our city and the service that we provide our citizens, so it's a no-brainer, so. Thank you, Brian.
Yes, you're welcome.
Was there a comment, Mr. Brady? I thought you were going for a comment there.
I just was, the optimism about getting the legislature to change this. I think the council understands this. This is critical. You know, what's happened now because of the law that was, the legislature's action in 1979, essentially, this law creates this cap that was created by a legislature in 1979. And the only way to create the alternative or the exception to that is to go to home rule. And so almost every city in the state has to go through this process. I know if the mayor were here, and I'll just bring it up on his behalf, because he would have asked the question, there is a permanent base adjustment that we've explored, considering also, and that would allow us to do it one time, and then it would continue in perpetuity. And I think one of the things that he would have asked us is, once we do the home rule this, if we were to do the home rule now, this year, or coming up in November, that we should maybe consider looking at the permanent base adjustment in between the next four years as an option. So that's just something that we probably will bring to council, but we first need to get this in place, get this adopted. That's a different process. The language, the presentation of the ballot language is materially different, because you're actually setting a new base from which you then begin to do the calculations going forward. And so we'd like to get this approved, obviously, and get it on the ballot, and then, in maybe a year or year and a half before the 20, it'd be the, what, our 2024 election, maybe we come back to council and talk about the possibility of considering a permanent base adjustment and what that would look like on the ballot. So that's just something we'll do.
And that still goes to the voters?
Yeah, so it does.
Great. Okay, well, thank you very much, Brian. As was expressed by the council, it is absolutely imperative for the operations of our city and the services we provide that is passed, and hopefully, our voters will also find that value in the quality of what we provide. Thank you. So next item is item 2B, is a presentation and to take action on a recommendation in the favor of the declaration of the Stage 1 water shortage plan, to begin implementing informational conservation measures and encouraging voluntary water conservation. And we have, welcome Chris Hassert and Brian Draper. Welcome, gentlemen.
Good morning, Vice Mayor, Council. So I am here with Brian Draper, Water Resources Advisor, and we wanted to cover this morning a topic that you've probably seen on the news just about every day, has to do with shortage in the Southwest and in particular, Arizona. about every day, has to do with shortage in the Southwest and in particular, Arizona. There's a few things we want to talk about. We're going to get into things that we're doing, things that we've been doing. Then we're going to talk a little bit about our own drought plan. And I'll probably use the word drought plan and shortage plan interchangeably, but they're the same thing, just so you know. Our, our shortage plan or drought plan is four stages, and we're going to talk in particular about stage one today. Before we get too far, we wanted to take a step back and talk about where the water comes from in Mesa. So you're looking at that map, where we're sitting now is the city zone, so roughly everything west of Val Vista, that's in the city zone, and that's served by SRP. So that's your Salt River watershed and the Verde River watershed. I should state that, so the SRP, you're not seeing much talk about that in the news right now because it's a much healthier reservoir system right now. Lake Roosevelt is around seventy percent full. That's the biggest lake in that system. And the other lakes are all very healthy as well. It, it's had its difficulties in the past, but as of right now, the focus, the real focus is on the Colorado River system. So sticking with the map, the eastern part of the city, we have broken into two zones, but they're served by the same water source. It's Colorado River, or in our case, CAP. The eastern zone, that's served primarily by the Brown Road Treatment Plant. And the southern zone is served by the relatively new and expanding Signal Beat Water Treatment Plan. And then all three zones are also served to varying degrees by groundwater. And then before we leave this map, I think it's also important for me to emphasize that as I'm going over Mesa in our particular situation, you need to understand that every city is different. So every city has its own makeup of water, how it's supplied, how it serves its customers. For Mesa, we're talking specifically about our portfolio, our challenges, what we're doing. So just keep that in mind. Other cities, like for instance, I can point out Tempe, they're served almost primarily by SRP water. So they also have a drought plan, like us, they're required to, but they're probably going to take a different approach than, than say we would. And that's the case for every other city. So that's just something I wanted to point out. Okay. For this slide, I'm going to read it directly because I think it's pretty poignant, and it really captures the essence of what's going on. Due to historic drought, climate change, and overallocation, conditions on the Colorado River are worsening. While deeper shortages may come quicker than anticipated, Mesa recognizes the situation is serious and continues to strategically plan for a future with less water. Now, that's, that's a broad statement about the Colorado River system, but now let's dive down a little bit deeper. I have two graphics up there that focus on the two largest reservoirs in the Colorado River system. You don't hear as much about Lake Powell traditionally, right? You hear more about Lake Mead. So Lake Mead is in this situation or that situation. There is a lot of focus lately on Lake Powell because the water level is dropped considerably low, and you can see the storage in the lake itself, in that reservoir, is just under a quarter, it's about twenty-four percent. The lake level, the importance there is that it's about thirty-three feet away from, if it falls another thirty-three feet, it would be at a point where the dam can no longer generate hydroelectricity. So that's an issue because it's part of a broader portfolio of energy in the Southwest. But equally important is the hydrologic considerations. So at that level, another thirty-three feet down, the only way to move water from Lake Powell through the dam into the Grand Canyon and then onto Lake Mead is through four lower outlet tubes or pen stocks. Those pipes were designed to carry flow through the, through the dam, but they haven't been used operationally to any serious degree in many decades. So there's a concern that we want to keep the lake level up in Lake Powell because we don't want to test those outlet pipes, and we don't want to run into problems that are unforeseen. So there are measures the Bureau is taking right now to move more water into Lake Powell from some of the upper reservoirs, in particular, the Flaming Gorge Reservoir up on the Utah, Wyoming border. And as well, they're going to prevent, or they're going to keep more water behind that dam, the Glen Canyon Dam, and really, not release it right now, but release it at a later date. So they're trying to, a lot of steps to preserve Lake Powell. Lake Mead, so that's, that's the dam that you hear about more when it comes to the tiered shortages that we face here in the lower basin states. Right now, we are in a tier one. What I do want to point out that tier one does not mean that Mesa is shorted any water. We're not. If we get into tier two, which is a little bit lower elevation, then we would take a small cut between two and three thousand acre feet. So to put that in perspective, our cap allocation, our cap portfolio is over sixty thousand acre feet in the low sixties. So it would be about four percent of that, but also because we have SRP and groundwater, it would be two percent or less of all of our water. And because we do have buffer in terms of what our demand is and what our portfolio is, it's a small hit, but it's not anything significant for the city. So I just wanted to point that out. So I want to switch gears now and talk about what we've been doing. And I think it's to point out also that it's important to say that we didn't just wake up yesterday and realize we're in a desert. We've been doing things for, for many years and decades to really make our system resilient and our water portfolio robust. But some of the things we're doing, think about these in different categories. There's a lot of words up there, but think about administrative actions and physical actions. The first two bullets are administrative actions we've been doing. One has to do with working with customers, in particular, large commercial and industrial customers that use a lot of water, working with them on their sustainability plans, their technology, how they use water, how they can use water better. And then also, we have an ordinance that's rather recent that limits how much any one user can be served by the city from our portfolio. If they have a facility that's going to use more water than that, they need to bring water, they need to go on the market, they need to work out a deal, get water, and then deed that over to our portfolio so we can treat it and deliver that to them. So we're not using water in our own portfolio that would exceed or stretch beyond what we have planned from a master planning standpoint. The next bullet is also, has to do with administrative measures. It's tightening up or using new American Water Works Association water auditing practices. And why that's important is it focuses us, focuses us on really looking at the minutia and looking at ways where we could be losing water or wasting water and tightening up those areas. So that's, that's very helpful. The next three bullets are really a testament, well, the third bullet actually has to do with water loss, so that's a physical measure. So we have a very robust leak detection program that's very active. We look for leaks, we try to, we try to solve leaks before they become breaks and they become more serious. We have devices that we use throughout the city that are using the latest technology to look for anything out there, any anomalies that would point us towards a leak, and then we go address those proactively. The next three measures are a testament to the work that the Parks Department is doing along these lines. Right now, they're using weather sensors, or I should say, smart irrigation controllers. So they, they monitor the weather, they monitor the moisture in the soil, and then they only water when they need to. So it's, it's very efficient technology that helps parks use the minimum amount of water. We're also reducing the amount of areas that we overseed. Five years ago or ten years ago, there may be parks or areas within the park system that we overseeded, that we decided, you know what, we don't, it's not that important if we oversee this particular property, and we can save a lot of water in making that decision. And then finally, as we design new parks, we are very conscious at looking at where turf is used. So we want to use turf where, where there's activities like sports, or folks playing with their kids, or their pets. Those are what are known as functional areas. If there's areas off the beaten path that traditionally would have been turf, but the only feet that you're going to see on that turf is the person doing the mowing, then that's ornamental, and that's, that's a good opportunity to eliminate that turf and save some money. Not money, but really, well, money and water. And then finally, I wanted to add this point because it was pretty significant, but within the last year, we worked with the city of Phoenix at the Val Vista Water Treatment Plant, and we lined a very large reservoir, twenty-million gallon reservoir that was leaking up to a quarter million gallons of water a day. So that was a very significant project. So every four days, we were losing, leaking a million gallons. So now that's been solved, and that was a very big project.
Chris, on this, I assume for our city parks that we use plottable water to water, I mean, is there any opportunity to ever use affluent or treated water for watering grass?
If, Vice Mayor, Council, I would say, if we were to, if we were to look at additional places to deliver reclaimed water, so we'd have to extend the Purple Pipe System. So that would be a significant cost. But we'd also be cheating the effluent exchange program that we have with Hela River Community because right now, that's a super efficient system where it's, it's one massive piping, piping system, all the water is directed to that, and it's very efficiently delivered for that maximum exchange of CAP. So rather than, than thinning out the use of reclaimed water, our, our aim is to focus it for that one purpose.
Understandable. Thanks.
Listen, on, on the topic of parks, have we, do we do analysis of if, as we build new parks or upgrading, if turf, artificial turf is, is an option to move over? I know there's, within the sports community, this debate on, you know, grass versus turf, but if we are, you know, looking at these challenges in the future, building turf, artificial turf soccer fields and, you know, outfield for baseball to limit the use of water in our parks and maintenance, I would assume, have we looked at those pieces as we move forward with building new parks?
Yeah.
Good morning, Vice Mayor, Councilmember Hridya. Artificial turf for sports fields in this climate is extraordinarily hot and difficult for the users of our facilities to manage. And so when we build new parks, we are still keeping with natural turf, but doing it in a way where we're concentrating the areas that are planted in grass for their recreational value and not for decorative value. So there's a recreational reason for the turf to be there to limit our water use.
We, we have like the, the new Bill Bank Park.
Yeah.
Their whole is like, they're, all our soccer fields are turf, right? And so i- if we have, if we're looking at the future and as far as, you know, ensuring that our park system is not using a lot of water, maybe looking into how we strategically place a lot of our, or move into maybe artificial turf.
Sure. We can look at that.
For this reason.
Yeah. And it's interesting, Councilmember Hridya, those, they have to use a lot of water on the artificial turf to cool it down.
Sure.
So, yeah, I think it's, hopefully, the technology will get us closer to that point, maybe in the future. But, you know, there's a lot of evaluation that goes into that. One, it's very expensive relative to natural turf when we put it down. But, you know, eventually, maybe, you know, and the playability, I think that's the concern about the heat. But you're right. I mean, I think the answer is, we have to keep looking for alternatives, right, that are lower water usage, what, whatever that leads us to. And so we have to continue to look at it. But our experience is that even if when you put artificial turf in there, sometimes during the day or during the season, you're actually putting water on that turf, too.
Okay.
All right. I have a question on that. Andrea, has there been a temperature measurement regarding natural turf and artificial turf, the temperature fluctuations? You say one's hotter than the other.
Councilmember Freeman, there's been extensive research on that and studies on it. I don't have any of them with me today, but when we were looking at the Red Mountain Park expansion, we looked into all that early on in the feasibility study process to evaluate whether those fields would make sense to put in artificial turf. The temperature concerns in our climate, as well as the replacement needs, that artificial turf has to be replaced much more often than you would have to touch or replant a natural turf field, and that generates waste as well, an additional capital investment and replacement costs. So when we looked at all of that together and the playability of the field, natural turf was the better solution for our climate.
Well, I'm all about natural turf, don't get me wrong. But I just wondering the temperature differential. And plus, I think, you know, the heat stress that's placed on anybody on a turf, artificial turf might be increased, you know, just for, on the body itself. So, I mean, there's the human safety factor on top of that. So that, I know Bill Bank does, does have a lot of artificial turf, but I would imagine it'd be hotter around artificial turf than natural turf. If you want to see that, you can come down to an alfalfa field at Center Street in Brown. I can, you can stand out there, it's really much cooler. But I have some other questions, but I'll ask later. Thanks.
Thanks, Andrea. So I wanted to continue on with what we're doing, measures that we're, we're doing. And some of these we've talked about before. So, and this slide in particular, the first two bullets really get into that exchange we have with Hela River Indian Community. So we do, already do have two of our reclamation plants connected to the pipeline system that delivers effluent to Hela River Community right now. We deliver about sixty-eight hundred acre feet every year. So that's from the southeast plant and the greenfield plant that effluent was delivered. And then exchange, we get very senior CAP rights. And why that's significant is as the CAP or the Bureau starts to cut, they're going to cut the lowest priority rights. So these rights that we're exchanging for are some of the most senior rights that there are. They'd be the last to be cut. Bringing us to the Central Mesa Reuse Pipeline, which is in design right now. In fact, we have a workshop this afternoon with the full design team going over comments from the thirty percent design as we're making our way towards the sixty percent design set. But that, this project is very significant because it's going to tie our final plant, the Northwest Reclamation Plant, into that system with a ten-mile pipeline. So now we'll have a thirty to forty mile pipeline system with all three plants consolidating all of our effluent into and maximizing that exchange. Because right now, we're really underutilizing that very beneficial exchange agreement. So with it, with the Central Mesa Reuse Pipeline in place, we're going to be between fifteen to twenty thousand acre feet delivered in that exchange for very senior CAP rights. So that's very significant. And as we get cut, if Lake Mead continues to drop and drop, and the cuts get a little bit more severe, anything we're doing here would go above and beyond those cuts. So we'd be making up for those cuts and then some. So I think that's important. It's, it's important to understand with that project. Also groundwater, we have over half a million acre feet of long-term storage credits. So that's, that's groundwater banking of effluent we've done over the years, over many years. And to put that in perspective, that's over five years of total use here in the city of Mesa. We use roughly a hundred thousand acre feet, that's about what we consume in a year. So we're on our way to six years because we continue to add to that. So we're on our ways of six years of long-term storage credits, which is pretty robust. I see a lot of cities with a couple of years or one year, so this is very significant. And then finally, we're looking for other ways to augment our water supplies. We're always in search of how can we add more to our portfolio. So we're working on a list of things. Actually, we've been working on a list of things for many years, but there's augmentation opportunities out there, such as you've heard about the Bartlett Dam, raising the Bartlett Dam, us being a participant in that, and then capturing some of that increased storage, adding that to our portfolio. So that's one of the measures that we're looking at for augmentation. I'm going to turn it over to Brian to talk a little bit more about a couple more things that we're doing right here and right now. And then Brian's going to get into the specifics of the stage one of our drought plan. Morning, Council. Appreciate being here with you this morning. Some of the other things that we've been doing as a city is expanding our customer outreach. Even though we have not formally declared a stage one at this point in time, because there was a tier one declaration by the Bureau, we went ahead and started initiating the things we would do under a stage one. So we've been expanding our customer outreach, we've been working with internal departments like water conservation and the city PIO office to get that messaging out there and help residents and businesses, you know, look to take an active part in using water more efficiently. We've also took part in a historic partnership of the lower basin states to try to save an additional five hundred thousand acre feet of water in Lake Mead for this year. Mesa's portion of that was only twelve hundred acre feet, but they do look to initiate this plan for
for 2023 and possibly 2024, because every little bit counts. So as we're shoring up Lake Mead, as Chris had mentioned, they're trying to hold back water in the Powell to protect that lower power pool level. We're doing our effort in Mead to ensure that we bend the curve and try to reduce the reductions in elevation in Mead. And so those are some things we've been doing internally and externally with our regional So what would a Stage One declaration entail? Well, I kind of capitalized on, you know, increased media, using all social media outlets, our city website, we've been doing that, but by declaring a Stage One, the city definitely would pivot that messaging and really begin to engage our customers even more, educating them on what can be done and meeting internally with our internal departments to increase that messaging, but also, the city is the largest water user in Mesa. So it's going to be imperative that the city set that example and start looking for ways to conserve before we ask our residents to have to take some mandatory measures. So we're going to be meeting internally and looking for those opportunities to reduce our reduction. And Stage One declaration implies that the rego, the goal for reducing is 5%. And so we're going to be looking for those reductions from city facilities. Now I will say, as Chris mentioned, we live in a desert. The city of Mesa's always been active trying to conserve water. We used to have grass in medians and along the sidewalks, and the Streets Department has done an awesome job over the years of reducing that high water use within the medians and along the curbside and going to more low water use landscaping. So we've made efforts, there's not a whole lot of low-hanging fruit out there, but collectively I think the departments here internally can come up with some ideas and we can bring those forward to Council, just to kind of showcase what we've been doing. And that's the messaging we want to get out to the, to the public as well. So Stage One, as I mentioned, is, is really, you know, getting that message out there, what can the public do, you know, themselves voluntarily to be more efficient? Stage One does not include mandatory commercial or residential water reductions. But through education, we hope we could see reductions overall, because we do get asked quite a bit, phone calls and inquiries online is, what's the city doing? What are we going to do? We see this in the media, and we need to get out there and be able to showcase the, the great things Mesa has been doing, as Chris mentioned, the water auditing we've been doing recently, identifying those, those water losses that we're experiencing in the system. We don't do well tooting our own horn, but we're going to get out there and really start showcasing this messaging and, and show visually, you know, that we're taking this matter seriously.
I'm Brian, just a second. Councilmember Spilsbury?
I should let you do your conclusions slide, but just really quick, on Stage, it was Stage Two that then would have mandatory restrictions?
Stage Two could. What you see in the water shortage plan when you get to Stage Two is we provide a laundry list of opportunities for Council to choose things that they would like to implement. The list you see is not a guarantee we're going to do all of those, but what it does say is, these are options that you could use, and Council could choose to enforce these things. We could, you know, make some mandatory reductions, like, you know, you can only water on a certain schedule like they do in Colorado now. We could, you know, start enforcing water wasting and per ordinance, that shows that the Water Department would be doing that initially, and that could be achieved through our meter readers. They're out there every day pounding the pavement and they could identify and report water wasting occurring. And then there's, there's provisions in code for, you know, a second occurrence or a third occurrence. But at this point in time, Stage One, there are none. And if we get to Stage Two, because there are some pretty defined triggers that would force us to go into Tier Two, or Stage Two, pardon me, and a Tier Two A on the Colorado River may not force that.
Okay, and then when it says encourage voluntary water conservation measures by the public, are there specific things that we would be trying to communicate? Like, are we giving them a list of things that they could do to encourage, or is it just a general encouraging people to save water?
Absolutely. We would resort to coordinating with Water Conservation Group and, and Environmental and Sustainability, and they do have messaging already queued up, it's, it's already on Water Use It Wisely, but I, I think there's an effort now to pivot those messages and make them more direct and get those out and start working with the public and get that messaging so that folks can see that and, and get some ideas on what they can do at home.
I really do like the idea of us as a city tooting our own horn, like you said, to be more transparent and open about what we're already doing, because like you said, we've, you've been working on this, you know, in perpetuity, right? Like, it's always been something that you've been doing, but maybe people don't realize it. And so I think there is a fear in the public that we're not doing anything, so we need to make sure that that's known, so I appreciate that.
Thanks.
Councilmember Luna?
Thanks, Brian. You know, we had this conversation like a week ago, I think.
Yes.
And I appreciate it. I'm going to be meeting with the group this morning. Where can I find those talking points to just alert them now, hey, we're, we're having, the city of Mesa is going to try to, to do some things to limit our use of water, but how do, what do I tell residents? Do you have that on your website, or do you have talking points that I might be able to use?
I think it's on our homepage.
Oh, perfect, perfect.
Councilmember Luna, Vice Mayor, some of those talking points, Water Resources could provide, provide that to you for the water supply, and some of the other messaging that were, that have come out of Water Conservation Group, we can get those to you as well. But some of those are included on the Water Use It Wisely website.
Okay.
But I can tell you, they're going to be looking in the future, near future, kind of revamping some of that and making them more targeted rather than soft, because we're hearing from some of the PIOs that we need to make those more firm rather than soft messaging.
Maybe, Anna or Kathy, do you guys want to maybe share with you, because they've got a, they've been working on a plan, maybe that would be helpful for them to?
And I see on our mesaaz.gov homepage that we have water conservation as, you know, the landing and going as far as easy access without having to search further, but Anna?
Vice Mayor, Council, last week, upon the Colorado River shortage briefing, we sent out a communication with all of what the city of Mesa has done and is doing in terms of water, so the public knows what, what is already in place in this regard. And our Water Department, Kathy can talk more about how we're updating our pages also with that information.
Okay.
And at the same time, to address Councilmember Spilsbury's question, we are working on an awareness campaign to also educate the public on what they can do to reduce their water consumption.
Yes, Vice Mayor, Councilmember Luna, the information you're asking about is actually on our website, the city's website, mesaaz.gov/water, and we have a section on the right-hand side called Water Stewardship, and you can find the talking points, all the current information for our customers, for businesses to go to and find out what's going on. And we're updating those regularly as our messaging is pivoting, letting our customers know this is getting more serious, here's what we're doing and here's what you can do. And we're coordinating closely with the Water Conservation Office to update those messages so people know exactly what they should be doing at this point.
So our residents needs to start doing that now, not wait until January, is that correct, Luna?
That's correct. And we have already, through our Sustainability Group, they've been wonderful in sharing messages about water conservation. We have a social media hashtag, Water Wednesdays, where we share simple tips, things that people can do, whether it's with landscaping, leaks in their homes. So we are very actively, we've been doing it for some time, but we're going to be ramping up that awareness campaign so our, of our residents know what they can do to help, and even involving our little kiddos, right? Because we know education starts when we're little and these habits, starting to form good habits on our, on our young residents. So we're, it's a very comprehensive awareness campaign in terms of communications that will, will involve social media as well as different other tactics that we're going to be using through our museums to, to get to our residents and bring that water conservation message and what they can do on their own.
So in the city of Mesa, we have a number of golf courses. Are you sending that message to them as well? They, they're obviously heavy water users.
Right now it's just a general announcement to all the public. We're not, we're not targeting any particular industry at this point, so.
Are you, and are you doing like a video to, that we can send out to our communities in terms of how to conserve water? Is that something you're planning to do?
That's part of the awareness campaign, and we're in the process of developing the content. We're going to be working with the different education partners as well in the, in the East Valley here in Mesa to develop that content. So that is something that we're doing, including working with some of our horticulturists to produce that, that type of content, that is in the works right now. And it's been in the works for the last couple of weeks.
And I'm assuming you're working with our schools, our school districts?
Yes.
To provide that, that messaging?
Yes.
Okay, great, thank you so much.
Of course.
Don't you all remember growing up, if you grew up here, you remember all these like videos we would watch about brushing your teeth or washing your hands to turn off the water? Do you all remember that? Anyways, I haven't seen anything in a long time.
I did those videos.
Oh, you did those videos? Okay, thanks, I appreciate that when I was a little kid.
Another item that we're doing to help residents is we're starting a pilot program on an automated metering system at, at home so that you have, you can monitor your water usage and other utilities from your app to see where it's going. So that'll really help residents to understand where their water is going, and often in landscaping, there's leaks and you don't detect them until it's been going on for quite a while. And since about 70% of our residential water use is in landscaping, that'll really help us reduce leaks that are not helping us out at all. Do you have more on, you want, okay, I'll, we'll let you finish up.
Well, we are wrapping up, and I, I heard a couple of interesting things. Councilmember Luna, you mentioned your meeting with the group here today. One, one thing that I think it's, it's good for everybody to understand when they're talking with constituents or fellow citizens, is ask them how much water they use every month. Because I, I'm amazed how many times I have this conversation, I say, well, how much water do you use in a month? No idea. You got to know where, where you're starting. You can ask me, I'll tell you, not to the gallon, but, you know, within a thousand gallons. I know how much water I use in the winter, in the summer, because if you don't know where you're starting from, you don't really know how you can improve or the changes you can make. So that's, that's something that's really struck me over, over the years. Wrapping up, so our shortage plan, as we talked about, there's four stages. Stages two through four, they get more restrictive, they get a little bit more intense with information and guidance. Stages two through four require council approval. Stage One, per code, only requires the city manager's approval, but we wanted to, to be here in front of you today, give you as much information, give you an update on where we stand. Going forward in the next several months, so you know, we're coming up to August, so August every year, the Bureau looks at their latest and greatest hydrologic modeling, and they determine through that modeling where Lake Mead is going to stand January 1st of the upcoming year. So here in a few months, we're going to go through that exercise and we'll determine where we sit with respect to, it's almost certain we're going to be in, in one of the Tier Twos, Two A or Tier Two B. Two, Two A is very, it's a very narrow band, it's only five feet, and we're almost there now. And then Tier Two B, it's a, it's about a 20-foot band before we get down to elevation 1025, which is Tier Three. So there's a level of confidence, the announcement in August is going to point to we're going to Tier Two. And as I mentioned before, there could be a small cut to Mesa. Right now, to reemphasize, there's, there's no water cuts to Mesa, but we want to be very aggressive with our messaging, our outreach to the public, our interaction with the media, presenting all the updated information to you folks, make sure you understand and have that information. So that's where we're at today. It's really to, to answer your questions and present information and, and let you know where things stand. So Mayor, Council, so most likely, we wanted to start presenting this to Council, obviously we started putting information out. The official declaration of going to Stage One will probably happen early next week. One of the things we are working with is, there's a few other cities that are in similar situations than we are and coordinating with them, so there's kind of a unified messaging going out. And so most likely that'll happen, we think, the first part of next week, so that kind of the messaging, broad community, everybody's hearing the same thing. But obviously, we wanted to bring this to you today before that's actually kind of officially declared, and that, but that'll most likely happen early next week. So we just wanted to make sure you heard this first and then you won't, you know, you'll expect that something will happen early next week.
Councilmember Thompson?
Yeah, with, you know, from the, we, we all had dinner with CAP and, and heard their discussions and, you know, the gloom and doom that's coming, but we've seen a 60% increase in water delivery rates from CAP over the last few years, and we're expecting another significant increase this year. And then in addition, once we go into a Tier Two A or Two B, just two-tier period, we will have a, a little bit of a cut in our water supply from CAP, but we'll also have a cost, a delivery rate increase on top of that because of Tier Two. So I think it's incumbent, A, that the community and businesses understand that we need to reduce our water consumption to reduce our, help reduce our fees, our CAP fees on acre feet of water used. And then also from a city perspective, we really need to take a look at how we're going to absorb those costs, because, you know, that's, those are significant costs that don't necessarily know that we can pass on to our, to our consumers. I mean, that's, that's a huge cost of trying to spread that, that peanut butter across the entire city is still pretty significant to the ratepayer.
Yes, Councilmember Thompson, that, that's important, although we didn't, we didn't get into the economics as much today, that is a very important point and something we struggled through this budget cycle. And we were fortunate, because CAP, very deep into our budget cycle, where it was almost too difficult to make significant changes, suggested that they were going to raise our cost per acre foot by $41, so that's about a $2.5 million hit to our budget. Now, they had a couple levers they could pull, they decided to do that, and that's going to reduce that to about $21 an acre foot, which is still significant, that's the increase. But as we go into more tiers and there's, as you said, less peanut buttered or spread around or less to spread it on, that cost per acre foot is going to go up. So if we use the same amount of water with that increased cost, that, that is definitely a budget hit, and that's a good message to get out there too. And I don't know how it doesn't increase rates, so we'll, we'll be talking about that in the fall.
So we're Stage One, which I assume is in line with the drought contingency plan, they're Tier One, and then when we go to Stage Two, that'll mean that the DCP is in Tier Two? Or not necessarily? Is our, are our stages in a different level? Are they tied to the drought contingency plan?
Vice Mayor, the Water Shortage Management Plan Team, in coordination with the city manager, we set our Stage Two, Three, and Four with triggers. And so Stage Two, it's let, the trigger would be if our water supply on SRP was less than 80% or on CAP, if it got cut less than 50%. That would trigger us to go into a Stage Two. And it doesn't really conform with the, the drought contingency plan on the Colorado River, which is set by elevations, because since we have higher priority waters, we don't necessarily see those cuts. And so they may be into a Tier Three before we're actually looking to declare a Stage Two. And so we did that on purpose, because we know we have a diverse water portfolio, we have other supplies besides Colorado River, and so it doesn't really push us in that direction because we're still able to meet demand. But other communities did tie their drought contingency plans to the Colorado River, and that's why you heard in November, December of last year, Scottsdale declared Stage One of their plan, because theirs is directly tied to the conditions on the Colorado River.
So each municipality, we might hear different stages according to what their water portfolio is and how much they depend on CAP versus other forms and how that affects their end exchanges and what other, other programs they have, right?
Yeah, Vice Mayor, you're correct in that statement, and I think Chris kind of alluded to that when he kicked it off, is not all the cities are in the same place right now, because their portfolios are different. Tempe in particular, they have like 3,000 or 4,000 acre feet of Colorado River water supplies. They utilize most of that for the Tempe Town Lake area. So these cuts to them don't really impact them, and so they may not want to declare even a Stage One of their And so they may not want to declare even a Stage One of their plan until further down the road because they are mainly on SRP supplies and groundwater. And so we will probably see a mix of participation when Mesa looks to declare with Phoenix and another community member. But others may, it may signal to everyone here in the valley that we need to take this serious and revisit what those individual plans look like. And eventually, I think you'll see other communities begin to start declaring their Stage One as well.
Okay, so that disparity doesn't mean that anyone is more or less concerned. This just depends on their situation.
Correct.
At the city. So I noticed our water storage plan is dated from 2018. Do we need, in the current environment, do we need to make any changes or updates to that?
When we did that in 18, and then it kind of spilled over into 19. And so we did a slight revision just to put 2019 and then to also revise it so it conforms with the ordinance. So the plan was codified into our city code, Title VIII, Chapter 10, Section 8. And so we did a small revision. But I do believe, based on our water portfolio, that it's accurate. It's valid. And it'll serve us well moving into the future. Until such time we gain other supplies, we may want to back it off a little bit. So right now, I would say it's current.
And also, Vice Mayor, Council. If you remember, that was around the time that was done in concert with the DCP. So the DCP was wrapping up around that same time. So recognizing the measures they were taking, that was reflected in our drought plan.
Okay, okay, so it was relevant to that, for sure. And then my last question is, I noted that we have about 500,000 acre feet banked. So is that effluent water? Is that runoff? I mean, what kind we are storing water?
It's long-term storage credits. It gets a little technical because if you're closer to where we recharge, it's a little bit more favorable in the eyes of the state versus if you get away, we still are certified to recover those credits. Brian, if you want to add to that?
Sure. Most of those credits are effluent from the Northwest Water Reclamation Plant. But there are some other flavors of water because we did, at one time, have a GSF permit, a groundwater savings facility permit with RWCD. We were discharging effluent into their canal system. And then that offset any pumping they needed to do, so we got the credit for that. So we have quite a few credits accrued effluent in RWCD District as well, as well as GSF participation with SRP, bringing CAP water down through their canals, offsetting their groundwater pumping. So it's really a pizza of all different types of ingredients. But overall, it's 520,000, 540,000 acre feet of water stored underground in Mesa, under Mesa. And so we're pretty confident in that. And we have seen our groundwater tables stabilize over the years, if not even rise in certain areas, especially in the city zone. We're seeing elevated groundwater.
And our goal is not to use that. Our goal is to add to that and accumulate even more long-term storage credits.
And do we manage that water as far as the city and Mesa? Or is that up to the larger area management plan?
Well, physically, it's in the East Salt River Basin that lies beneath us administratively.
Legally, that's our water. And it's part of our designation that we get from Arizona Department of Water Resources. And so every 15 years, we will reapply. And that, they calculate what those credits are and distribute them through the 100-year designation that we receive from them.
Okay, right. Any other questions? This is, we could be here all day. I know, this is like a huge...
Well, I think it's imperative we do the Central Mesa Reuse Pipeline. I mean, that will add to our portfolio very significantly. So, you know, the acre feet or the gallons that we get from that will be, you know, something else we can add. And there are some things in the work to, probably I'll say it this way, provide less dependency on CAP water and move over to SRP water because it's cheaper water, right? I mean, it's, what are we paying for CAP? $224 an acre foot somewhere?
Right around there.
$221? And it's what, for SRP, $43?
I think we pay, with all administrative fees and everything, about $43 an acre foot.
I mean, so significantly budget-wise, that's a big difference. So if we can kind of switch our percentages, we use 100,000 acre feet a year?
In total, right?
In total. And probably 60% of that is CAP water?
About 55%.
Okay, so we kind of switch those percentages to help with the budgeting issues. And maybe in the future, SRP will be a stronger, more robust, reliable water supply. And it's closer to us. Not that CAP isn't, but...
Yes, Vice Mayor, Councilmember Freeman. There are opportunities to do just what you're saying. There's certain limitations, but there's opportunities such as the NCS water we've talked about, which is water stored behind the Roosevelt Dam. We have ownership in some of that volume. So we can move that anywhere in the city. This opportunity that I mentioned about Bartlett Dam, joining into that venture, that's opportunities to use that water at that very, like you said, very low rate anywhere in the city. So there's opportunities.
Yeah, and just planning for the future, Mr. Brady, the Bartlett Dam will be a critical component to capture that water. You know, and that cost for that will be significant for the future of Mesa. And, you know, eventually, we'll be built out. But, you know, they plan to...
Trying to figure out how to get a water from North Cave Creek down to Mesa, that's the key.
Yeah. Well, and then having the Bartlett raised 90 feet approximately. But that's 10 years away even before they start construction. So, I mean, that's how far out we have to look in the future for our water supply. So thank you. I think again, to my colleagues, is we need to be leading the way in the messaging and with our city-owned properties. Because people will point the finger and say, "Hey, you're not doing what you're preaching." And I don't want that to happen. So thank you.
Other comments? Okay, well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
For the presentation on this important subject.
Thank you.
That concludes our presentations. So we'll move to Item Three, which is to acknowledge receipt of various meeting minutes. Is there a motion? Councilmember Freeman, seconded by Councilmember Spilsbury?
Real quick.
I'm sorry.
The last presentation was an action item.
I'm sorry.
No, it's fine. It doesn't...
It said we needed to take action.
As long as you acknowledge that we're going to be doing it, that's fine.
Okay, all right.
Thank you. Thank you for making sure that we're good on that. So on the minutes, I have a motion by Councilmember Freeman to approve the various meeting minutes and seconded by Councilmember Spilsbury. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. And next item is current events and meetings attended. Councilmember Luna.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Last night, as I mentioned, I attended a community meeting at Red Mountain Police Station. And I want to thank Tim Walker for hosting it. We had several people there, so we had a good turnout. Talked about homelessness in Northeast Mesa and a lot of good dialogue with our residents there, along with some of my colleagues here. We attended the building homes for heroes over in Northeast Mesa. It was a great opportunity. It's a nonprofit committed to supporting men and women who were injured, quite sorry in that country during the time of wars in Iraq and Afghanistan. So they go in, build a home, and the mortgage is paid and they get to move in. So it was a very heartwarming opportunity. Also, I attended an ITC meeting just last, this week. And we're planning our summer conference, which will be held in Atlanta. And then last week, I got the opportunity to visit the White House. I was invited among Latino leaders across the country to listen to the President and First Lady. And it was a great opportunity. There were a number of Latino leaders that were present and had a real good time there. And I was proud to represent the City of Mesa. And that's it.
Councilmember Moretti.
Just a quick shout out to all the graduates at Mesa Community College and folks graduating from college this week. And then looking forward to all the students graduating from Mesa Public Schools and other districts here in Mesa. And then second, would like to invite everybody tomorrow, tomorrow night from 5:00 to 9:00 at the Rhodes Aquatic Center. We have our Spring Blast. I had this before COVID. Hopefully, we'll have our Flow Rider open and Open Swim, some music, food. So please join us from 5:00 to 9:00 at the Rhodes Aquatic Center. Enjoy some good family fun, so thank you.
Well, I got to attend some Earth Day environmental awards given by the city over at Field Elementary, as well as Edison. And we had some great winners, Kate Langendorf from Field. She won first place. I was impressed with their artistic capabilities. And each school won a great package for their school, as well as a tree. So they planted a tree at the school. And then I was able to attend Mountain View where Jocelyn Hernandez won the rap for the Valley Metro Bus. I filled in for you, Councilmember Moretti. Thank you. But it was really cool to see her graphics on the bus, and it'll be for a year. She was really excited about that. So it's great to go to the school and see these kids over at Edison as well. So at Edison, it's interesting, they actually have a little dog park. And they have their dogs come and hang out there. And so they have a tree, and it's good for the children as well. Thanks.
I just want to say thank you to the staff. I was gone for two weeks and missed a few meetings. And I've appreciated the staff willing to meet with me separately, individually, and do the presentations and make sure all my questions are answered. So thank you so much to all of you who have done that or are going to be doing it.
In advance.
Okay, I found out a few things this past week. On Thursday, I visited Battery Solutions, this is a business at Mesa Drive, the US 60. You probably saw it if you drove along the US 60. They do amazing work in recycling batteries, from little ones to huge car ones. They work for a variety, mostly commercial resources. And we're very informative. And we'll be exchanging some of that information for recycling batteries through our workshops, through our climate action plan. That evening, I also attended the greeting committee for Mesa Public Schools Retirement Reception at the Convention Center. On Friday, I did listen in to the CAP Colorado River briefing, which was very informative. On Saturday, I attended the Matriarchs of Washington Park exhibit that was at the Alston House in Washington Escobedo neighborhood. And it's artist portraits to recognize and celebrate women who contributed significantly to the community in Washington Park, part of the Washington Escobedo neighborhood. And it'll be in display at the Mesa Main Library, I think Memorial Day coming up, and eventually an issue. And that night, I attended, along with the mayor and Councilmember Freeman, we were at the East Valley Hispanic Chamber of Commerce Mother's Day Mariachi Concert at the Mesa Arts Center. It was very good. And I love celebrating with them and their traditional songs and dance. And my husband, I can now say, even though he's Venezuelan, he was singing along with a lot of the songs. So it was their traditional songs with the Latin culture in general, not in just the Mexican culture. So it was lots of fun. And thank you to them for that celebration. I think that's about it. Mr. Brady, future meetings?
Yes, thank you. We will, our next council, meeting of the council will be Monday, May 16th, for a study session and council meeting. And also, we will, just for future calendar items, we'll be canceling the study session for May 26th and June 9th. So we'll put that out again later this afternoon. But just to know, those two study sessions will be canceled. There's scheduling conflicts. And there are Thursdays where we're not reviewing council agenda for a Monday. So anyway, so that's what we're making, those changes. And I think one of them's close to a holiday, and one of them's right after approving a budget. So we're going to try to give you some breaks. We've had some pretty intense study sessions over the last six weeks. So thank you.
Thank you. I think that's it. So I'll take a motion to adjourn our study session. Councilmember Luna has made a motion and seconded by Councilmember Freeman. All in favor?
Aye.
And we are adjourned. Thank you very much.